We'll call our finance meeting to order.
Let's, let's talk about our, our money. This year we came in for the month of June. We came in at one hundred and fifty-six thousand. And last year we came in at one hundred and fifty-one. Hey, y'all? Okay, okay. Well, we'll, we'll do finance. Uh, came in at, at one hundred and fifty-six, seven seventy-six. And then our county sales tax came in at one hundred and fifty-one, two seventy. And last year it came in at seventy-four, three fifty-six. Now, that puts us in city sales tax at thirty-three thousand, eight fifty-four over last year. And in county sales tax, that puts us at thirty-eight thousand, six sixty-two. So, um, I'm, I'm comfortable with, with our, our money right now, where we are, and on our budget. We have... Also, we have the, this on the demolition. We've got a couple that, um, one of them is at nine twenty-one Walco Road. And the other one is at twelve twenty-five Sulphur Springs Road. Um, and we have one bid on those. But I'd like for the finance committee to, to okay that, which we need to tear those homes down.
Do you have a second?
Second.
For, for finance, I want to talk about just a couple of things. I'm going to pass this around to you. If you've been out to the Department of Corrections, um, and have seen their sign that as they go in, I've got a semi-drawing here. Now, this isn't exactly what it's going to be, but, um, we, we, I'm going to just pass this around to you. And it'd be a welcome to Malvern sign, uh, coming in Malvern. Uh, you're looking at fourteen foot tall. And we also, Chief Tabor got the material donated. And so with that and with prison labor, we'll be able to construct the sign. Uh, I'll probably come to you for some money as far as, uh, the footer. Well, we don't have that, but all the bricks are donated, the mortars even donated. And so it's something that we've been trying to do for, for years. And, um, highway department wouldn't allow us to, but this, this property is donated by Dale Horn. And so, um, we'll start this real soon if y'all give me the gullet to go ahead. It, uh, we're ready. Jacob, I don't know if y'all can dig a footer. Y'all have it. So, anyway, we can do this for very little money. I, I, I don't have the final figures, but we'll have that to you. But if you'll just give me the blessing to go forward with putting it together.
Do you want nothing but a motion?
Uh, in.
Okay. Do I have a motion? All in favor?
All right, thank y'all so much. Chief Tabor, where are you?
Right here, sir.
Here, here with y'all.
I'm ready.
Yeah, there'll actually be, there'll be four. And so, uh, uh, again, the, it'd be closer to the sign, the one that's at the Department of Corrections. Uh, it'd have a star where Hot Springs County is, and that'd be in black. And, uh, uh, and they want to do some things, some civic organizations want to do some things on the side. And, uh, now they'll also will be the, uh, the, I guess LCD that will be able to post things, everything from a child missing to burn van to different things. It'd be a marquee that, uh, that'd be electronic. So, it's, it's a good deal for us. I want to, uh, turn it over to John Langston. And there's some people here from the EDC, the Chamber. Uh, I see different people, uh, that, that are here. Uh, John wants to, to talk to us about the A and P packs. And just give us a little more feel. You asked that we put together a committee. Uh, we have an extremely strong committee. The committee is, uh, everyone in there is a, is a self-thinker, and we really get a lot done. Uh, John, let me just turn it over to you. However you want to present it, if you're going to do a presentation or Nikki's going to do the presentation.
Well, it was my understanding that this, this meeting was just to, has to be placed on the agenda to be seen
Yes.
The next council meeting. Um, so there's not so much as, as a presentation, other than just a request to appear before the council. At, at the request of the exploratory committee, they asked me to come before you and request this. And what we have found is that we really don't want to push, everybody is in consensus in terms of that this has to go before the public, uh, that it should be decided by the public. So everybody on the committee is, is on board with that, and that's great. Um, and in doing so, the next step would be, well, what does, what does the ballot measure entail? What's going to be said on the ballot? So, in coming before the committee, or before the council, um, it would be to, to start that process of interacting with the city attorney and developing the language of the ballot measure. Um, and so once we get that nailed down, uh, we can compile that with, with all the other things that we want to do in terms of what the A and P tax will pay for and exactly what it will be spent on and have a very clear defined plan of action to take, um, for the A and P commission once they are established and, and the, and the tax is passed. And that's where we are right now. Uh, we're just in consensus that, one, we, we need to be able to, uh, have the input from the city attorney on the ballot measure. And, uh, from there, we just develop the, the appropriate language to go on the ballot.
Okay. So you're, you're asking to be on the agenda for this month? To, are you asking for the blessing of the council to go forward?
Yes, now, what the, I mean, the blessing of the council's going to be needed. But it's also so that they can reach out in, in due process to the city attorney and say, you know, we want it, we want to open this up to election. So, and, and we, we're, there's a lot of people initially, this is, well, we need to get this on the November ballot. Uh, the time constraints, uh, based on everything that we need to accumulate in terms of, uh, you know, engineering reports or estimates, uh, design work for a very specific clear plan, we just won't have time to get that on, uh, all together and presented for a ballot measure before November. Actually, it'd have to be, it'd have to be sixty days before the election that it would have to be on the ballot. So we just, we're limited by time in that respect. Uh, so we want to be able to also just leave it open for election. And that may be a special, a special election, um, after November. But we want to make sure we do it right, you know, and everything is, is lined out properly.
Thanks, John. Nikki, do you have anything to add?
I just wanted to add that, um, on behalf of the Chamber and Economic Development Corporation, we have a joint, um, resolution to share with you all, say that, say that we support, uh, going after an A and P tax with, uh, the vote of the citizens. We support it.
Oh, okay.
So I'll have just a joint resolution to hand out.
Okay. Thank you.
Along with Rick McClure.
Along with Rick, okay. Get that on the, uh, agenda. Uh, the next thing that we have is, we have, uh, David Costin. If you remember back in, um, in January, we brought to you, uh, about the generator. And, and it was asked to be put off, and now here we are. It's time that, um, uh, it's time for us to bring it, bring it up again. Uh, David, let me turn it over to you.
What I have here for you is, uh, the cover sheet is engineering estimate for the cost of the generator and, uh, project. Can I just hand y'all these and pass them around? One of the auditors also asked me to get some prices on portable generators. We called three people, three different companies, to submit the cost for portable generators. And, uh, there's three estimates in there for, the last one on the back though is pretty low bid, but they wouldn't give us specs that we wanted to compare apples to apples. So really, in my opinion, that one will be thrown out. The other two are pretty close, one's at one thirty-six, and the other one's at a hundred and sixty-eight. Now, if we decided to go with portable generator, it wouldn't be where we could leave it there permanently if the water started to get up. Because in a permanent generator, be it, it's going to be elevated to, uh, above a hundred-year floodplain. And some of the other costs that you would have, like the six hundred amp feet of line on the front page here, that they got estimated at thirty-three thousand, you're still going to have to buy a six hundred amp feet of line. Now, it may not have to be that long, maybe shorter, I don't know. Uh, the automatic transfer switch repair, we know that, that repair needs to be done regardless of whether we get portable or, or permanent mount. I think that you'd find if you do the math on it, you're going to come out about the same either way. What I'd like to ask the council to do is, is let me at least go to bid on construction for a permanent generator. Is there, do I need to go back over the history of why that's needed down there?
I remember.
No, I know what's needed. What are the wishes of the finance committee?
I'm going to go ahead and move to the bid, go ahead and get the bids and see if they're right. I'll put it on the agenda. Okay.
Do you have a second? All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have from the Hot Springs County Library.
For the agenda meeting?
For the agenda. Oh, okay.
I'm not asking you for any money.
Okay.
Give me some money, come on.
I'm not used to you being here and not asking for money.
I never, I rarely ask for money.
Yeah, rarely is the...
And it's my money when I ask.
You're right, you are right. Phyllis, you've got anything else for finance?
Not for finance, I don't have anything. Um, some of you weren't here when I told you that the big packet at the back is, um, a packet on information for the, um, bid on the mandatory garbage collection. Luke is looking it over. He couldn't be here tonight because one of his children is in the hospital. Um, he's going to get me some information. We're going to work on some details on this, and I'll try to have y'all a final copy. But at next month's meeting, we'd like permission to bid that out. And we'll try to have your packet ready to look at, a completed packet ready by, um, the next finance meeting. But that, this packet on the garbage is just for information only.
So we're going to take that up next month? Okay.
Has there been some changes in the management and who's doing the trash pickup?
Yes.
There's some things going on, right?
Yes.
Right.
Like what?
Like they, uh, cut the management. And so we don't have, uh, they even changed the phone numbers and, um, we don't have...
But we're still dealing with the same cap?
We're still dealing with waste management. But, um, but there has been some management change, changes.
And I have asked Luke, there's some things that we just really need to put down in detail that we didn't have before. You know, we just kind of, we need a definite day that we call in account. And they need a definite day that they bill us because we have pulled billing invoices about eight times, and it's just a mess. So we just really need to be more precise about when, when we get the bill, when we pay the bill, and when they get the, the count from the water, you know, on how many households that we're picking at. So I, Luke has been, he's done a really good job of, uh, going through and looking at everything. We also need to talk about options because one company that's wanting to bid, wants to bid containers. And he thinks that if we let them bid containers, we should just put that in there, that everybody has to either bid a container or say they can't make that option. But anyway, he's, he's done a really good job, and he should have something for y'all in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, for finance, we got anything else?
Do I have a motion to adjourn the finance meeting?
Okay. In, in the agenda meeting, and Larry wasn't able to be here tonight, and, uh, the one that says the ordinance, we, we already have this, this ordinance, and we're going by this ordinance. But what it, but what the auditors have said is it's not placed in our personnel manual. And so the only thing this is, is just the housekeeping, and, uh, but we still need to make it part of our personnel manual. And I'd like for it to go on the agenda.
The ordinance is already in place. Are we going to pass it?
We'll have to pass it. But, but we, uh, let's see, is Big John here?
Yeah.
There you are. John. Little John.
Hey, he's out. Is he?
Oh, okay. It, um, this is already in place, correct?
Yes, we've, uh, it's, it's like a common practice that we do in just in our general everyday upkeep and maintenance and keeping track of who and who accesses our network and how. And as, as the mayor stated, that the auditors came in and said, well, we need to document it. We need a practice laid out, uh, or, uh, best practices. And so we went by this, uh, standard statement, which is modeled after the Arkansas Department Information Systems Best Practices and is for the same technical policy on a state level. Um, and of course, this, this does meet our requirement for the ADLA standard and brings us into compliance for that, that particular requirement. So, I mean, you know, an ordinance would just allow it to be placed in the handbook, but it's something that we already do and are pretty proactive about doing. You know, um, in, in particular, if somebody brought a personal laptop to work and they wanted to connect it, to connect it to our network, well, this policy would prevent that. But if we had a third-party software company that we partner with and they need a remote in to, uh, you know, service their own software, then there's guidelines laid out in this that provide for that to be authorized. So, I mean, a lot of it's, uh, common sense in terms of IT security and best practices, but, you know, this is just a documentation to actually back it up and say that it is in place.
Does it just go on the handbook? Nothing, nothing fancy. Uh, resolution? And this is resolution on Mary Cheatham?
Yeah.
Okay.
The temporary board has asked that I appeal to both the city and the, um, county to pass resolutions in support of an honorary name change to the library. Um, we would maintain our same legal name as the Malvern Hot Springs County Library. But they would like to, in addition to that being on our building, add Mary Cheatham's name, um, to the sign as well. So it would, the signage would read the Mary Cheatham, Malvern Hot Springs County Library. Um, Mary Cheatham was our longest-serving librarian. The library has been in this community for eighty-six years, and she served as librarian for thirty-one of those, exponentially longer than any other librarian. I believe, I believe I may be the, the second-longest at seven years. Um, unless Ms. Rutherford may have had a couple more than that, but significantly longer than anyone else. Ms. Cheatham's health is in decline, and the board would like to recognize her contributions to the city and the county through her work with the library while she can still appreciate the honor and understand what's going on. Again, we, it's not a legal change, um, we just want to honor her, putting her name in addition to the current name on the building.
Uh, comments from the council?
Maybe we put it on the agenda?
It is on there. Have y'all got a copy of the resolution? The next thing that we have is... Citizens wishing to appear. Yes. Uh, state your name and...
I'm going to come up here and state my name.
Pardon me?
I need to come up here and state my name. I'm talking to y'all anyway. I, I'm the one personally I met you before, you know, Mr. Mayor and all y'all. I was here last month and told you I needed some help, and y'all introduced me to Mr. Bailey. Uh, the speeding on Hall Street has dropped by about fifty percent. So that's remarkable because it's a difficult street to maintain. You know, it's, it's hard to set up radar. But I don't even know if they, they wrote any tickets or not, but we have got quite a bit of results from them just being there every now and then. Almost got run over trying to stop a car last week because he almost hit two kids. And, you know, I told y'all we have this problem. Got your pencil and paper? They want license plate numbers. I think this is it. It's, uh, should be easy to find. It's Wendy Elsie. Personalized license plate on a white SUV. Need to pull him over. They just about got the two kids. The kids, they saw him come. Problem we might have on that street is at the other end of the street, the east side of the street, there's not a sign up there that says twenty miles an hour. Might, if you know who to talk to, that might be something that would be beneficial since it's twenty miles an hour going the other direction.
Roy, is there a sign there now?
There is on one end of the street, on Hall Street. You wasn't here, you should have been here.
Yeah.
And you'd know all this stuff.
You already know.
If they remember, I had a big long sheet. Today I've got this. I'm real pleased with Mr. Bailey.
It's so glad I wasn't here.
Yeah, I know. But I'm real pleased with what Mr. Bailey has tried to do for us on there. So, uh, that's what, uh, next thing I want to bring up, do y'all have a blight officer in this town?
A blight?
Yes.
Well, we have a code enforcement.
Let's get a code enforcement over here. Whoever happens to live close to Hall Street, drive by there tonight when you get done on, uh, Hall Street and School Street at the intersection and look at the southwest corner. I mean, talk about a pigpen, a mess, let's go get it and get it straightened out. I found out I don't need to be on your agenda. This is where things will happen, is right here. So that's what I want y'all to take a look at, whoever has a chance. Any questions of me that you guys have before I go and rest up for the next meeting next month? Because I want to report and tell you that y'all done good. Y'all done real good, okay? And I know you're probably grabbing over your chair, saying that, that can't happen, somebody say that, but I am. If you, uh, need me, y'all, some of you know where I live and my phone number. So anyway, thanks a lot, and just do whatever y'all need to be doing. And I'm glad to see you finally at work.
Thank you so much.
You're going to feel much better. I hope you're going to feel better.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Phil, David?
They're separating the, uh, ordinance on, uh, deposits.
Secreting on the...
Yes, it is on there.
Yeah, it's, it's on there already.
Um, Margaret Jasper? There you are.
We were here at the last, uh, agenda meeting and at your, during your absence, uh, Mayor Nora. Uh, we were talking about the concerns and things of the drainage system in Wardmore and Bryant Sedition area. And, uh, Kaylee was, um, sitting in here, uh, presence of that particular meeting. And so what she did ask us to do is to work with Malvern, uh, Street Department and try to get something done. And Mr. Jacob Wright, uh, came out that following Monday, and we did an assessment tour of the whole neighborhood to try to identify some of the things that were causing some of the drainage and the flooding problems that we have in the community. So what we have done, we have done the assessment, uh, write-up, and also we have the photos here to give to you tonight.
We're planning.
Okay, and that's, uh, kind of give you an idea of what, you know, we found and all of that and what would need to be done. Also, we worked on a strategic plan, and we met with, um, uh, Mr. Glenn McLeod on the twentieth. And, uh, what he had done, he had done some of the additional assessments after, uh, Mr. Wright and the community had gone out. And so he did have some other things to add to that. So that's also added there in the, the assessment of, uh, the, uh, that you have there in your hand.
Now, the prisoners have already started cleaning.
They did down on Kelly Street, was that main... They did down on Keller Street with that main drain pipe that had never been replaced, they started that last Monday.
Okay.
Uh-huh, they did that last Monday.
Good.
Okay, and the next thing is that we worked out a strategic plan, how the city and the community can work together. So what we've been doing, we've been trying to work together on that effort. So this is your strategic plan for that and I do have copies, if people like some for your council dinners. Also, during our meeting with Mr... I'll have to give them to you.
Okay.
This is your way. This is like a map that Mr. McCloud gave us when he met with us on the 20th and he kind of put some little thumb tacks into the areas that he think that we need to start working on. And so all photos, we didn't have just one set of photos, so that is in that plastic container that you have there. And so that is the map to go with it.
Okay.
Now, what I do have for each of your council members, I have a copy of the strategic plan and also I have a copy of the drainage assessment that I like to give to each one of your council members.
Yes, please.
Okay, and I'll have to unpack.
Yeah, we got some help back here. You gonna break out on some?
Well, I think we need help around here.
I haven't been around you, they haven't done that.
I've been around.
Okay, this first one is the flood control and you have it already. And I think I need four on this side here that you can pass. We need three on this side here. And we are not really finished, one of the things that I did email Mr. McCloud to do was to give a projected budget, what he thought was caused, because we can't do that, he has to do that. And so I did email him and ask him to come up with that projected budget to give to everybody.
Okay.
Okay, and this is the strategic plan for each one of you. And what we have done, we have conducted several community meetings with the residents to kind of educate them on things that will have to be done about these myths and we are not completing. And so also, we were able to identify some property owners who do not live in the area. So we have done some of that and it has been passed on to Mr. McCloud so he can make contact with him for some of the work that needs to be done. So we are not completed with that, but we'll have to probably do some more. So we would like to consider this for your review and also to give us some consideration at the meeting on next week.
Thank you, Jacob, will you tell?
Yes, that's fine.
The estimated cost for coalage alone was around 10,000.
That's just covers?
Yes, the coal.
Okay, and it's... And you will see in there some of the areas, we don't have to read it to you, you will be able to see some of the areas where we have severe problems at. And so, but anyway, I think with that, that gave you some insight that it's gonna cost, you know, beyond that 10,000, just for the covers.
Yes.
Okay?
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other citizens wishing to appear? Yes?
Yeah. I'm Hunter Wendell on behalf of the Malvern Downtown Development Corporation. A nonprofit that's recently formed to promote revitalization and preservation of economic development in downtown Malvern. As some of you may know, our, Malvern was recently admitted to the Arkansas Downtown Network, which is a program under Main Street Arkansas. Our nonprofit will work with Main Street Arkansas and local partners to educate the public and provide some services to downtown business owners and property owners. While our efforts so far have been just private individuals, we think partnering with our public institutions will be beneficial to our efforts. So we respectfully request you to put on the agenda for next week to formally introduce our group to the city council. I guess briefly, provide an overview of our purpose and some of the benefits we can provide and most importantly, seek the city's direct support and involvement in our important work that we've just begun.
Okay.
I don't have any handouts.
You will.
Get souvenir.
Give me your name one more time.
It's Hunter Wendell.
Hunter, are you new to Malvern National?
Yes, sir, well, relatively new, I've been there a couple years.
Oh, okay. Any objections to putting him on the agenda? You can carry your own.
Thank you.
Any other citizens wishing to appear? That's all that I have.
One thing I'd like to suggest to the A and P committee that we schedule a meeting sometime between now and the council meeting to come up with a little more detailed request or agreement so that when we come, we're talking about some specifics as it comes to just generalization and that.
Wouldn't it, handling get the council approved, putting it forward in election? That was...
I can hear you.
I mean, I thought what John said was what we're trying to do as far as getting it to election, getting us to say, "Let's get it to election," whether we're probably not gonna have time to get it on the general election, but if we have to do a special election.
But to get it on the election, you gotta know what percent tax you're talking about, who you're gonna tax and all that sort of stuff.
Absolutely.
And what it goes for.
And what it goes for and that sort of thing. And we really didn't get that far in the committee, I mean, we talked about it, but we never did. I would like for it to come as a recommendation from the committee to the council, but this is what we would like to say. Otherwise, the council is gonna have to decide, they're gonna have to decide anyway, but it may not go along with the committee.
The only thing I remember, there was a concern about the city attorney not being involved and that's where we were running into some of those problems on getting the wording.
I've looked at some of the ordinances in other cities, some of them are 16 pages long. With all the detail on how the tax will be collected, who will be taxed, there's a lot of specifics there that won't necessarily be in an ordinance that goes on, you know, to get it on the ballot. But before you put it on the ballot, you gotta know that what the specifications are. Is it 2 percent, is it 3 percent, is it 1 percent, does it have a sunset clause? Does it not have a sunset clause? Those sort of things, I think, for the council, assuming again that they want to get it on the ballot by November.
No, can't, today's it.
So you got plenty of time to do it, but at the same time, this could be a topic for the council, the council wants to express their views. I'm looking for a starting point.
Sure, no, I understand. I just thought we were just trying to get more input from the city council by bringing it before them.
We can do it that way too.
Yeah, and introduce them what we're trying to do. And John, did you have something?
I just want to state that, you know, we have everything pretty much nailed down in terms of the percentage and who will be taxed, it will be on the hotel and the prepared food, both institutions. And the only thing we don't have nailed down right now is the exact project. And just getting it to where we can present it to the public and engage them in a dialogue in terms of, "This is going to a ballot measure, you will have an opportunity to vote on it." From now until that time, until the day we do vote on it, that gives us time to develop our plan on what we want, what we think's best, you know, the best use for the proceeds of that tax and then how it will benefit, you know, the most amount of people in terms of...
What David said is just a council blessing to go forth.
That's what I understood, not necessarily to say, "Well, we're already talking about 2 percent on hotels and prepared foods," like you've saying. We just don't have a specific project that it would first go to necessarily.
Yeah, and if we pick a project, once we pick a project...
We're having to order them out.
Once we pick a project, then we have to reach out to engineers and get estimates.
I don't remember agreeing to any percentage, I don't remember agreeing to anything. It's part of the thing that all I agree with us to support. They have seen it.
Right, now, I think that's what they're wanting is that we support it. The main thing is that we support letting the people vote.
Okay. Right, letting the people vote, not the city council decision.
Right, right, thank you, John. Thank you. And Phyllis, anything? Anything from the council? Yes?
Yes, I'd like to make a statement concerning this tax. I'm 100 percent for it. It's a wonderful thing, it'll help our community. And what you need to do is make sure that people understand what they're voting for. Because when you say tax, that just, man, I don't want more tax, but that's not really on us. It's on people from out of town. I don't go to a motel every night, so that doesn't affect me. And I go out and eat once in a while, but that won't hurt too much. So I'm really for it, I think it'd be great for our community.
Thank you so much.
I do agree with the point that it would be good to have another meeting in between now and then just to make sure if there is any, if there is anything that it isn't worked out before it's presented. You know, I don't know, I think you were kind of calling it together, so...
Yeah.
I mean, yeah.
I know we have resolution from the EDC and the chamber. And so, that's what we'll go by. And then that'll give us plenty of time, it'll give us, give the public plenty of time to understand that it's gonna be a separate group that's gonna be in charge of this. The council, once it's passed, the council doesn't have any say so.
That's one of the concerns I have, is the fact that once you turn it over to that group, you cannot specify how they're gonna spend that money.
That's right. They're autonomous.
Unless it's stated in the ballot measure, then they're bound by the ballot measure.
Measure that covers every conceivable... Use...
If I can get away with it, I mean, if all we're gonna do is, you know, just say, "Look, we're putting it on the ballot, that's all we're concerned, I can go through that."
That's what I understood.
Right. Okay, that's all that I have. Make sure that no one else, when I leave anyone else out. Motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.